We're going to call to order this is the Tuesday, September 17th, special meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here. Thank you. We're going to have public comment on item three, which is interviews of advisory body applicants. Do we have any public comments before we start our interviews here? Any public comment in person? Not seeing any. Do we have any hands up on Zoom or emails in for public comment on the interviews we're about to do?
We do not have any public comment via Zoom and no email public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. So we'll close public comment and move on to item three, which is interviews of advisory body applicants. We're going to start with 3A, which is the flood control board. We've got two candidates for up to two seats. We're going to start with Kenton Wolfers and then we'll move on to Sally Aaron. Just so folks know, in terms of the process here, what we're going to do is for each of the candidates, we're going to have an opening statement at one minute. We're going to ask four questions at two minutes apiece. We will ask a commitment question and then we'll have another minute for an optional closing statement. After we go through that process for both of our candidates, we're going to deliberate at the council and then we will vote on appointments and then we'll move on to the next board or committee that we are interviewing. So with that, Kenton, welcome. Thank you for being here. Thanks for your interest in serving and I will turn it over to you for a one-minute opening statement.
Okay, thank you so much for having me here and give me the opportunity to tell you a little bit about myself. I live in Corder Madera, 46 Madera Boulevard. We've been there 17 years. We live on Lagoon One. I've lived there with my wife Catherine and we've raised two girls who are now both going to be in college as of this year. So that's exciting. They both went through all the schools, Neil Cummins, Hall and Redwood. And as you might see, I play in the Corder Madera Forty and Over Men Softball League. And we've got our playoff game tonight at 5:30. And I love to trail run. I love to mountain bike. I really enjoy being part of this community. I really feel like Corder Madera is an awesome place to live. And I am also a Realtor, so I have a lot of public facing interaction with people and it's helpful for me to know and be informed about a lot of different things.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to our first question here. These are going to be four questions at two minutes each. First question, what motivated you to apply for the flood control board? What experience and expertise would you bring to the flood control board? And what do you hope to accomplish by your participation?
Yeah, thank you. So living in the flood zone, living on Lagoon One, I've always wondered and being in a flood zone, you pay for flood insurance, you know, what, how the system works. And over the last couple of years, I've learned more about that and I am really curious to learn even more. I'd like to be more informed, more of an expert. And so I'm really curious about that, being on Lagoon One, which is an integral part of the flood control system. I do have also a vested interest in being an informed person and being able to communicate with my neighbors and actually selling a house on the lagoon right now. So it's helpful for me to just be very informed. So yeah, my motivation was really just to be informed enough that I can know for myself and then I can be a public facing individual and share my information and answer questions with other people and hopefully be part of the solution for the town council and flood control board. And I don't have any experience with flood control issues.
Sounds good. Thank you. Question two here. Do you have any conflicts that may prevent you from making an unbiased decision concerning agenda items? Are you a member of any organizations that may influence your decisions?
I am not a member of any organizations that may influence my decisions. You know, I have a vested interest, I'll say, in, I think, my community, real estate values, protecting my assets and being part of the solution. It seems that a lot has been done to create a pretty effective flood control system. But as we look forward in time with climate change, it seems that there's going to need to be thoughtful process, thoughtful discussion and good solutions. And I would imagine that money is a big part of like, how do we deal with that and how do we prioritize projects that are most important to our community? So prevent me from making an unbiased decision. I mean, my goal would be to try to just take in all the information and try to make what I would consider to be a logical decision or comment and feedback. So I think everybody's got some level of bias, no matter what they think. So I would do my best to strike.
Great, thank you. Next question. Have you had an opportunity to work with the Department of Public Works on any projects? Or do you have an understanding about how the Department of Public Works operates when it comes to public projects?
I've had, I've had very little interaction with the Department of Public Works. I do filter sometimes. We have a sewer lateral inspection, sewer lateral repair, sewer lateral replacement, which I think somewhat deals with the Public Works Department. But I think I've just learned more recently. There was a proposal to put a roundabout in front of, on the street at the corner of Council Press and Madera, which I got involved in the discussion of that over the last, I don't know when that was, four or five years ago, maybe, three or four years ago. I have been to more meetings lately and, you know, I guess what I would say is when things are more integral to my personal interest, I've gotten more involved. But as my kids are now off in college, I have more time and more interest in becoming more involved in the community and having a voice and having better information. So I can make informed thought processes and decisions for myself and communicate to people I know about that.
Great, same.
And what challenges do I see the FCB facing in the next several years? I mean, I think, yeah, I think, I think it is difficult for people to agree on things. What I've noticed is that there's a lot of different opinions out there. So trying to funnel those opinions and facts down into something that's a good plan for everybody and hopefully be part of a long-term vision for this community.
Great, thank you. Question four here. Please describe your strengths and weaknesses as they relate to being a board member. And how would you describe your problem solving style and strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision making in a public setting?
Yeah, so my strengths, I mean, I consider myself to be a growth mindset type of a person who's open to listening to everybody and moving things forward in a timely fashion. Once, you know, have a good idea and a good handle on things. So I think I am a good problem solver and I think I can energize people. I've, you know, I've been a part of Team Sports a long time and I've been involved in selling and things like that. So I feel like I've got a good voice for motivating people. I would say my weaknesses are maybe being a little too emotionally reactive to things. And so I would think this is also an opportunity for me to grow in that regard. Because I think you do really have to be patient. I've been to a few of these meetings and I see a lot of patience and understanding. So that's something I would hope to improve on.
Great, thank you very much. We're going to ask a yes or no question here. The flood control board meets on the second Monday of even months. Meetings begin at 6:30 PM, run approximately two hours on average, and board members are required to attend in person. In addition to regular meeting attendance, board members are expected to read the agenda materials provided, which are typically posted the Friday prior to the meeting, and come prepared to discuss agenda items. Considering these expectations, do you feel you are able to commit to the term you applied for on the flood control board?
Yes, I do feel like that. I did read that. I did consider that. And as I mentioned before, I do have more time on my hands and more of a desire to be involved and learn more, participate more, educate myself and be a liaison to the public and try to just help facilitate good, good decision making and processes within our community or as it relates to flood control.
Great. Well, thank you very much. With that, you're welcome to make a one-minute closing statement if you'd like.
Yeah, thanks so much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak. I'm, if I've been given the opportunity, I'll do my very best to have a level head and an open mind and be solution focused and show up and contribute to the best of my ability.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. And we will invite Sally up. Thank you, Kent. Thank you, Sally. Welcome. Thanks for being here. We'll go ahead and invite you to make a one-minute opening statement.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting me come before you to interview. Let's see, Sally Aaron, I live at 26 Chickasaw Court. I moved to Corder Madera in 2017 after living on a sailboat for two years, sailing down to Panama. We moved here for work and fell in love with the community and have stayed. We bought our house on the lagoon in 2019. I have three kids. One graduated from Redwood and is currently at university. I have a student at Redwood and a student at Hall. My kids have attended all of the schools, Larsburg, sorry, Neil Cummins Cove. I'm currently the board president for the Marine Girls Chorus. I've been on that board for six or seven years. I also lead the setup crew for tidal waves, the swim team. And just overall have just generally been decently active. I work full-time as well, so.
Great, thank you. So we're going to ask the same four questions now at two minutes each. First question, what motivated you to apply for the flood control board? What experience and expertise would you bring to the flood control board? And what do you hope to accomplish by your participation?
Yeah, I mean, I've been before you before, so I've told you kind of my history of, of kind of following, you know, what's been happening with the lagoon. The main thing was, you know, when I started getting into it and learning more about the lagoon, I was given a stack of papers with the history, you know, some stuff from like Clyde Markhart and just going back to like the eighties and nineties. And what I realized was that, you know, the lagoons actually used to be much more organized, the folks that lived on it, and they actually used to have representation on the flood control board and much more just dialogue. And it seems like that's kind of disappeared over the years and I don't know why. But, you know, given just, you know, I've really talked a lot to the community members who live around Lagoon One. It's been a great experience, actually. I started attending the flood control board meetings, I think, last December. And after learning about it, I started like going over and looking at East Corder Madera. I had no idea, you know, what was going on and how integrated everything was. And so that's really been the inspiration is one, just wanting to make an impact, wanting to represent my neighborhood and also just much more broadly. I think it's a very well-run group and I'd like to be a part of it and contribute.
Great, thank you. Question two here. Do you have any conflicts that may prevent you from making an unbiased decision concerning agenda items? Are you a member of any organizations that may influence your decisions?
I am not. I mean, you know, obviously I live in an area that's impacted obviously by, you know, the setup of the flood control system, Corder Madera. So, you know, I would love to bring that perspective as a voice. But as I said, you know, I'm, I'm very interested. I've read that whole Storm Dream Master Plan. You know, I've learned so much about it. And, and so I'm really interested in the system in totality because I think that's the only way we're ever going to, you know, continue as a community to make good decisions.
Thank you. Question three. Have you had an opportunity to work with the Department of Public Works on any projects? Or do you have an understanding about how the Department of Public Works operates when it comes to public projects?
I've certainly learned more in the last couple of years than I ever had before. So, you know, as I said, I have started attending the flood control board meetings. I've started attending the town council meetings. So, you know, I'm, I'm learning and I'm interested in learning more. So I'm certainly not coming into this blind. You know, have met with, you know, Bob Bundy. So I feel like I, you know, I'm starting to, to learn more. I remember reading one of Clyde Markhart's memos and it said, "You really need to commit to these things for three years because it takes you a year to learn how, you know, the system works and it takes you another year to learn how the flood control board works. And it takes you another year to be able to translate that back into any action." So I'm kind of in year one, maybe.
Great, thank you. Question four here. Please describe your strengths and weaknesses as they relate to being a board member. And how would you describe your problem solving style and strategies for dealing with difficult situations or decision making in a public setting?
Yeah, I would say, you know, the, the thing that I have found that I tend to bring to boards is just a willingness to kind of like move things forward and make progress. And even, you know, when kind of new initiatives need to get started, I tend to sort of bring that to the front. In terms of problem solving, boy, being on a nonprofit board, that gives you a lot of experience in navigating different points of views and things like that. So what I tend to do is, is listen. But, you know, at a certain point, sometimes you just have to agree to disagree and then figure out how you're going to move forward. Sorry, does that answer all the questions?
Yeah, I believe so. Thank you. We're going to ask you the same yes or no question now. The flood control board meets on the second Monday of even months. Meetings begin at 6:30 PM, run approximately two hours on average, and board members are required to attend in person. In addition to regular meeting attendance, board members are expected to read the agenda materials provided, typically posted the Friday prior to the meeting, and come prepared to discuss agenda items. Considering these expectations, do you feel you are able to commit to the term you applied for on the flood control board?
I do.
Great, thank you. And with that, you're welcome to make a one-minute closing statement if you'd like.
You know, thank you again. I know we had to have, you know, quite a discussion around opening up this process. So I appreciate the town council taking this into consideration and giving both Kenton and I an opportunity to apply. It means a lot to us. You know, we've, I, in particular, have, you know, advocated for this across the members of the lagoon. So a lot of people are pretty excited about the idea of having representation on the flood control board. So I just want to thank you again for the consideration. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so that concludes our interviews for the flood control board. So we're now going to take, have a deliberation at the council and then we'll vote on potential appointments. Who would like to start us off with their thoughts?
I'll go. I think both candidates are more than well-qualified. I think we're getting a mix also where I think Sally's been involved to a certain degree. And Kenton maybe not has much involved, but he seems he has that willingness to step up. So I think they're both more than qualified candidates for the flood board.
Thank you.
I'd like to just ask a question of staff.
Your microphone, Vice Mayor.
Sorry. Adam, is there any reason to be concerned to have two candidates who obviously know each other and they work together and they both live on the lagoon? Does that create any kind of problem for the flood control board?
No, I think one of the interview questions, I think, was trying to get at that and just in terms of having an unbiased view to the extent possible. And obviously this is a town-wide flood control board. So I think that's, staff doesn't see that necessarily as an, as an issue. So, but I put that back to the council for your consideration as well.
I wanted to make sure it wasn't an invasion. That sounds fine.
This, this is an advisory board. Is it regulated by the Brown Act?
Questions, comments?
Just one question and thank you both for applying and preparing and so well for our questions. One, one thing I'm wondering about is there was the question of deciding whether we were going to appoint one or two. And I'm wondering if there's any, we want to have a discussion about that.
Yeah, I mean, speaking for myself, my only thought about that is I would like to keep the board in an odd number of candidates. I don't know how many members we have right now.
Currently, we have five.
Okay.
And the flood control board allows up to seven members, which is why in the recommendation, you have the option to appoint both applicants or appoint one applicant only or don't appoint any applicants.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I mean, given that it's an odd number and we talked about it, but I still feel like as long as it allows seven, I can see no reason why we would want to exclude one of these talented candidates for an advisory board.
Yeah, I'd agree. Excellent. Would anybody like to make a motion on appointments?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Do we not take public comment on these?
Do we take public comment individually or was that all covered under?
It was covered in the beginning.
Okay.
Because it's a special meeting. We already covered public comment.
Got it. Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion to appoint Sally Aaron and Kenton Wolfers to the flood control board.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Great, thank you. Congratulations, Sally, and thank you for your willingness to serve. We appreciate it.
And, and good luck with those 1,000 jobs you do, everything.
Excellent.
Something done. Give it to a busy person.
All right, so we're going to move on here to interviews for the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We have one spot open for a youth commissioner and we're going to be interviewing Elizabeth Foster. Is that you? No, okay. So it seems that Elizabeth maybe is not here yet.
Correct. And she is scheduled to begin at 5:25. I looked through my emails right when we were having the discussion and sent a text message and I have not received a response. So if you'd like, I believe that's Dylan, right? We have our two applicants for the Climate Action Committee.
Cool, you're Sienna.
If you, if you're okay with it, we can move on to that and come back to BPEC if Elizabeth shows up late.
That sounds good. So we'll go ahead then and reorder our agenda here. And we're going to do interviews for the Climate Action Committee Youth Position now. We've got one seat open for that and two candidates. So we're going to follow the same kind of basic format that you just saw. We're going to ask Dylan to come up first. We're going to invite him to make a one-minute opening statement. Then we're going to ask him three questions at two minutes apiece. Then we're going to ask a yes or no question and then we'll invite him to make one-minute optional closing statement if he wants to. And once that's finished, we'll go through the same process for Sienna and then we'll bring it back to the council to deliberate and vote. So with that, Dylan, come on up to our podium here.
And I did have printed copies of the questions at the podium. So if you guys need to refer to them, they're there for you.
Great, excellent. Thank you. Well, Dylan, welcome. Thanks for your interest in serving. And with that, we're going to invite you to make a one-minute opening statement.
Okay, thank you. So my name's Dylan Ferris. I'm 17 years old. I'm a senior at Redwood High School. I'm relatively new to the town of Corder Madera. I moved here over the summer with my mom and my sister. And I'm very interested in joining the Climate Action Committee. So I'm dedicated to the environment and protecting it. And I'm excited to have the opportunity to join this, this committee within the town to help.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So we're going to ask you three questions here. You'll have two minutes apiece. First question, why are you interested in serving on the Climate Action Committee? What goals would you hope to advance on the committee?
Well, I'm, I'm devoted to helping the environment. I think the climate change is a very important problem that faces society today. I think maybe even the most important. And helping fight against climate change is something that I'd like to pursue in a future career. And serving on the Climate Action Committee, I'll be able to work with adults who have experience in the area and hopefully gain more knowledge and experience for myself and also help with the climate action plan in the town of Corder Madera.
Fantastic, thank you. Question two here. Please describe the qualities and experience that you would bring to the committee, including your experience and knowledge related to climate change, sustainability, or community outreach?
So I don't have that much experience since I'm only a high schooler. But I think I have more knowledge than the average high schooler. I've taken advanced science classes. I'm currently taking an AP Environmental Science class at my high school. And I think I have a good base of knowledge to understanding climate change. I like to follow news stories relevant to climate change. And I also have a little experience. I did an internship two summers ago with a company that made lithium ion batteries and had a mission statement of sustainability.
Very cool. Thank you. Question three. What is your familiarity with the town's climate goals, climate action work plan, or climate action committee?
Well, my familiarity is mostly limited to the information that's online on the website. So I know there's a lot of community outreach and a lot of research into sustainable alternatives to current systems and working to help make Corder Madera a more sustainable town. And I also know that part of that is, parts of the town are particularly susceptible to flooding and some even wildfires. And that makes it especially important in this town.
Excellent, thank you. We're going to ask you a yes or no question now just about the commitment that the committee requires. The Climate Action Committee meets the third Wednesday of each month from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. Committee members are required to attend in person and are expected to read the agenda packet, which is typically posted the Friday prior to the meeting, and come prepared to discuss agenda items. optionally, committee members may take on research and/or outreach tasks to advance the committee's goals outside of meeting times. Considering these expectations, do you feel you're able to commit to a one-year term on the Climate Action Committee?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And with that, you're welcome to make a one-minute closing statement if you'd like to.
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm very grateful for you considering my application for this position. And I'm also very grateful to be in a town that, that appreciates the importance of climate change and fighting climate change and helping the environment.
Awesome. Thanks a lot, Dylan. Really appreciate it. And we will invite Sienna up now. Welcome, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Yeah.
So we'll go through the same process you just saw. We're going to do an opening statement, three questions, a yes or no question, and then a closing statement. So with that, you're welcome to make a one-minute opening statement.
Okay. Hi, I'm Sienna Ruas. I'm 16 and I'm currently a junior at Redwood High School. I've lived in Corder Madera my whole life with my mom and my dad and my sister until she left for college. I play tennis. I'm on the varsity tennis team. And I'm also a member of the Environmental Action Club. And I've been on that. This is going to be my second year as a member. In the past, I've participated in events with the Climate Action Committee. I volunteered at Alliance Car Show and then also a ride and drive clean car show. Throughout both of these experiences and like the volunteering, I kind of realized that like being on the committee is something that I really want to do and I want to play more of an active role in this.
Thank you very much. We'll ask you three questions now at two minutes each. First question, why are you interested in serving on the Climate Action Committee? What goals would you hope to advance on the committee?
So I want to be a part of this committee because I don't feel like I can sit back and watch the climate crisis take like action without doing anything about it myself. So I believe that everyone has a role in helping fight climate change and being on a committee like this would give me a place to be, to be able to like do something about it. So I know the committee has an impact on our community and I'm really hoping to bring students into the mix. So that leads me to my next, or to my goals, which would be bringing more student perspectives to the committee based on my involvement with my Environmental Action Club and my Environmental Science Class. I would also love to activate student participation with any volunteer opportunities that might arise. And then second, I want to work to educate and influence younger kids into playing more, a more active role in climate decisions made around their households, whether that's like appliances or things surrounding that. Yeah.
Fantastic, thank you. Second question here. Please describe the qualities and experience that you would bring to the committee, including your experience and knowledge related to climate change, sustainability, or community outreach?
So I believe I'm a very hardworking person and I feel a strong obligation to put maximum effort into anything I'm doing. I have previous experience that has equipped me with skills necessary to do well on this committee. Over the summer, I did an internship at Audubon Society and it was environmental journalism. So this internship taught me how to effectively display climate issues with an informative yet emotional tone. In addition, throughout my schooling, I've constantly been learning problems and solutions to climate issues. And more specifically, my Environmental Science Class is teaching me the impacts that humans have on the environment and helps me to reflect on my own ecological footprint. And then throughout middle schools, I took on large leadership roles and I ran food drives and assemblies. And I also helped to put school functions on like dances and things. And additionally, I've always loved public speaking and getting to just speak to people about important things.
Awesome, thank you. Question three here. What is your familiarity with the town's climate goals, climate action work plan, or climate action committee?
So I'm aware of the committee's previous work and I've reviewed the climate action plan put in place. So I'm aware of the committee's previous work and I've reviewed the Climate Action Plan put in place. So I understand that the main goal is being to help advise the council on reducing Corder Madera's greenhouse gas emissions. I also know people that have previously been on the committee and that's kind of helped me like figure out like what is it that is exactly done and the things that everyone's really trying to do. And also just that, like, as a town, like how we can minimize our overall effect on the environment.
Great, thank you. We're going to ask you that same yes or no question now about the time required to serve on the committee. The Climate Action Committee meets the third Wednesday of each month from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. Committee members are required to attend in person and are expected to read the Agenda Packet, typically posted the Friday prior to the meeting, and come prepared to discuss agenda items. optionally, committee members may take on research and/or outreach tasks to advance the committee's goals outside of meeting times. Considering these expectations, do you feel you're able to commit to a one-year term on the Climate Action Committee?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And with that, if you'd like to, you're welcome to make a one-minute closing statement.
Yeah, I'm just really excited about this opportunity and I really appreciate you guys. I really appreciate you guys for taking the time and listening to me speak. So yeah, so thank you. And please note that whether or not I do end up getting a seat on this council, I would still really love to be involved and have a role in the community around environmentalism. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Sienna. All right, so with that, those are our two interviews for the Climate Action Committee Youth Seat. So we will bring it back to the council for deliberation. And I will note the very sad fact that I think we're all thinking about that we have two fantastic candidates. And for this one, we only have one spot, which sucks. But
We can't take them both? No, okay.
So let's go ahead and share our thoughts here. But I'm sure regardless of where we end up, we would love to have both of you continue to be involved with the Climate Action Committee because you guys know better than anyone else that the climate crisis really requires all hands on deck. So thank you so much for being here tonight, being willing to interview and being willing to pitch in. Anyone want to start us off?
I will, I will.
Go for it.
While I appreciated both of them, I did feel Sienna's was better researched and just has a lot more experience. And unfortunately, I think it's, you know, just because of the relocation and a few other things. But I really did like, and, and part of the reason that I could support Sienna's nomination is she has a resource within Redwood that Dylan could participate in and still be a voice and still have presence there, right? And that's what she brings that I think is, would still be inclusive to both of them participating, right? So I just wanted to put that forward and definitely, you know, I hope we can find other ways to integrate Dylan and contribute. And it's a one-year stint. So the only other thing to consider is that Sienna is a junior, so she could come next year. And Dylan needs this this year because he's a senior, right? And these type of positions help establish themselves for future growth. And so I think we should consider that, right? And how we feel as a group, just those are my two. But, you know, that's where I'm at right now. I'd like to hear everyone else's thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm leaning toward supporting Dylan. And very much because of that reason, first of all, I know what it's like to come to a town new and jump in. And that was me like 30 years ago when I was a planning commissioner. I'd only lived here, you know, a few, maybe a year. So I really love that. And then there's an opportunity as council member. Why am I?
Hi, Charles Lee.
There's so many Lees in my family. I should, that should be like right on the tip of my tongue. I'm always calling you Charles, so it's like, I never say your last name. But there would be the opportunity next year for others to join. And I think that since there's only, luckily, it is a one-year stint. And both are super, super qualified. So I'll just, that's sort of where I'm, how I'm leaning.
Thank you, Rosa.
Yeah, I, I would like to recommend that we vote Dylan in mainly because, and I, this is sad for Sienna, but you're already so effective, you're doing so much that you're already engaged. And I, and I, and I know that regardless of whether or not you get on this committee, you're going to keep that work going. The, the climate is really important to me too. I wrote a book about it. I'll be happy to get you guys a copy. But Dylan's new in town and my parents moved me right before my senior year of high school too. And I did not handle it nearly as well as going and applying for a commission in my town. I think I went off the rails. So I really respect that you're digging in and, and really trying to connect with Corder Madera. And I also like your scientific tendency toward wanting to go in, in that direction too. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Fred?
This is gonna be tough. I'm with Charles. I'm leaning towards, I may say your name wrong, if I do, I apologize. Sienna? Thank you. I'm leaning towards Sienna. I understand about Dylan being new to the town. But I also think that there's an important connection, connecting students with the town and with our climate action people. And I think she can fill that role, which may be, you know, more responsibility. But I think she can fill that role in. The other thing also, I saw this with Park and Rec, where we had commissioners that were seniors. There's a certain learning ramp that people need to go through when they sit on these committees. And when you're senior, I don't think you get that full experience. And I think this is a short term, correct? Because this term only, is it one year? Does it, I thought it ran through January?
It expires on June 30th of 2025. So it's a one-year term, but because we started the recruitment, it would start like tomorrow and then end on June 30th.
Okay. But again, I just think that there's continuity, especially being a junior. That gives her two years on that committee. Again, there's a certain amount of ramp up to learn that goes on in the workings of that committee and carrying that forward. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Fred. Man, this is tough.
You get to make a decision.
Yes. I know. We, we never have like three, two votes on, yeah.
Want you both.
Yeah, we do want you both. Excellent points raised all around. And I think for all of the issues that were brought up here, I think there's really two ways of looking at them and both are valid. So in terms of like, you know, looking at like junior versus senior, I think there's something to be said for creating room, like letting a junior come in and, and having the opportunity for that person to serve for two years. Because then what you end up having in that second year is you have institutional knowledge, right? You understand, as Fred said, how the committee works. You know, you sort of know what's going on and you can maybe be more effective. But at the same time, the going with the senior frees it up next year for new participation. So like there's, there's pros to both of them. With regards to like, you know, the, the fact that, that one of our candidates relocated, you know, I think there's something to be said for selecting a representative who's like more familiar with the community. On the other hand, I would never want to box out a newcomer who's just come to our community and is very bravely and generously put up their hand of volunteer time to get involved. And I think as, as Pat and Rosa said, it's so hard to get moved to a new community when you're in high school, at the end of high school. And I would love to, to be able to offer something to help kind of create a sense of like purpose and community and belonging. So that is super hard and I feel like I'm, I'm kind of split on both there. The only other thing I'll say, Sienna, Amy is your mom, right? So, so Amy Ruas was a fantastic, and I think a founding member of the Climate Action Committee. And the only thing that I'll point out there is that that's just kind of an added resource that Sienna would have at her disposal. And that I think, you know, boosts the kind of institutional knowledge component of it is that she's going to be able to get background on various tasks and initiatives that the committee is working on, which is kind of a leg up in terms of if, you know, if our goal, right, is just to make this committee as effective as possible. Yes.
I was just going to say, one thing we may want to, the council may want to consider is also an alternate, an alternate being appointed as well. We can't have more than obviously one youth member, but potentially an alternate.
I would love, love to do that.
Great solution.
Explain the role of the alternate.
Role would be if the appointed member was not available or could not show up at the Climate Action Committee meeting, any particular meeting, they would fill in for that person. Obviously, I would encourage both and all to attend the meetings regardless because there's plenty. It's the one committee that we have in town that also is very volunteer oriented and they actually go out and do things. And so you can pick up a lot just by attending the meetings of them participating.
Excellent.
Yeah, Mayor, I could support that.
Sounds good. So with that, I think, taking all of this into account, I think I would lean towards appointing Sienna as the regular and Dylan as the alternate. But I would really ask you both, if you're able to, if you have the bandwidth. I know you're in high school. I know you're dealing with college applications and homework and, you know, classes. But if you have the bandwidth to just kind of pitch in regardless, I know that the Climate Action Committee would really appreciate it. The work that they're doing is so important, but it requires, you know, just many hands make light work, right? So I think it, it would be incredibly helpful to have you guys both involved. So I think that, that's what I would recommend. And if that sounds good to the council, I would invite anyone to make a motion.
I can make the motion to appoint, sorry, Sienna Rojas to the Climate Action Committee and have Dylan as the alternate.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you, Adam, for that idea. I think that was great. Oh, Amy, thank you. So I'll call the vote. Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Great, thank you both. Congratulations, you guys. Really appreciate your willingness to step up and help serve the community and work on this important issue. So thanks so much.
And now you can work together on it.
Exactly.
Yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely. And Dylan, welcome to Corder Madera.
Dylan, where did you move from?
Nice.
Oh my gosh, welcome to paradise. Well, welcome. We share your passion for the environment, or at least I do. I'm not supposed to speak for everybody.
Thank you, thank you. All right, and are you Elizabeth or Emily? Excellent. Okay, so we're going to move on to Parks and Rec Commission Youth Seat interview here. We've got Emily Hitchcock joining us. You can go ahead and walk right up to this little podium here. I'll let you know kind of what our format is going to be. So first, we're going to invite you to make a one-minute opening statement. Then we're going to ask you three questions at two minutes apiece. We'll ask one yes or no question, and then you'll have a minute to make an optional closing statement if you'd like to. Does that sound good?
Thank you so much.
Perfect. So you can go ahead and start with a one-minute opening statement.
Awesome. So my name's Emily Hitchcock. I'm a senior at Redwood High School. What do I do there? I'm our THSD board rep. I do a lot of representation, representative work, sorry. I'm also spearheading the youth measure group for Measure B that will be passing to revitalize our schools and keep them intact, also keep them more climate resilient as those struggles persist. Additionally, I have lived in Corder Madera my entire life. My family, we've had this house, it's 1904. So it's very much in its roots here. It's rustic retro roots, but I love it. And beyond that, I'm very passionate about the environment and, most importantly, connecting everyone with it. And I think that this really embodies the position I'm coming for. And I know it sounds like I'm already trying to market, but it really is. Like, but that really encapsulates who I am and it really happens to work out perfectly. I'm currently spearheading the initiative for the People's Garden that will hopefully be implemented. We're working on with that money and everything. And yeah, that's a bit about me. And I'm really excited to be here today. Thank you, guys.
Awesome, thanks so much. We're going to ask you three questions now. We'll do two minutes for each. Question one, what is it about this commission that interests you? What qualities, experience, and expertise would you bring to the commission?
Yeah, so when you hear about the parks and recs, I mean, at least for me, an ordinary citizen, I think of how we are connecting our citizens, my fellow citizens and myself, with our environment, aspects of our community, and really finding the best in it and making sure everyone has that equal accessibility. The reason why I feel like I'm fit for that role is, once again, mentioning back to the People's Garden Initiative, we had reformed the initial approach. And if you aren't familiar with the People's Garden Movement, it is by the USDA. It goes by four pillars of education, equal access to food source and as well as beautification and habitat restoration. So it would be educating the masses and allowing everyone, not just leasing out of bed, but everyone can come and appreciate the garden space and get a food source as well. So that's just one aspect that I'm very much interested in. And of course, I mean, I see it just next to me at the gazebo, seeing people just work with or just not even work with, enjoy our natural community that we have here in Corder Madera. It really, I mean, going up to that my entire life, it's just, it felt so sentimental to me. Something that's really formative in the way that I grew up. And I plan on still applying that and working with that with future projects, with the People's Garden and just, of course, upholding and maintaining what's already been done. I did look at some of the master plan, which I know it's the next question. But I did see that the Cove Park was addressed a lot there. And I do think with my high focus on the Cove Park, that would be really, that, that's a level of expertise I can apply to this position. You know, making sure we're at ADA, ADA standards and everything, I definitely notice. And I'll get more to that next question. But that just kind of addresses the expertise I bring to this position. And of course, represent, like my representation, representative skills, sorry. And the work I've done with that, I didn't mention before, but I also was on the site council. I worked on behalf of students, with parents, with staff, et cetera. So.
Thank you. We've got our little, our little music here. That's hilarious. Thank you. Question two here. What is your familiarity with the Parks and Rec Master Plan? And what challenges do you see for Corder Madera Parks and Recreation over the next five years?
So building on to what I said previously, I reviewed the master plan and I was looking at the various parks that Corder Madera looks over and manages, such as Town Park, Cove Park, and looked into those. I looked at the particularly for Town Park. I saw that there was a graph there. It was infographic for the most community interests and what they're more, what they're most interested in. For example, it was a pickleball court and whatnot, what people most care about. So just starting there, we're looking at that master plan. And those are just things I've noticed are really important. People really do value these parks and spaces. Similar to the Cove Park, I see that it's highly used for sports. And also there's future activities they want, like cultural activities and things in that area. So just to address that first, now potential challenges I see in the future. As we know, we want to address potential climate issues. There's been so much on fire safety and regulations in that space. And the way that applies to our parks and how I think it could be a potential issue is really addressing the ADA regulations and our standards there. Over at Cove Park, there are a bit of issues with the paved sidewalks. I know that might, might seem like a strange connection to make. But of course, just making sure that all regulations are met, I mean, all, everything must be adhered to the same standard. And I think that, you know, to check and balance every single part of that is absolutely crucial. Because challenges that can persist, whether it just be the way that it's upkept and that can be a fire hazard, or the fact that, you know, people trying to move along it if something did happen. So that's something I want to address. And another challenge to see in the next five years, it's just making sure infrastructure buildings that work within our parks, parks, I mean, like Cove Park and Town Park are up to status and up to its best state. I mean, as I said, with the THSD bond measure, I'm very familiar with that looks like with a changing climate. And that's something I want to address if it becomes.
And question three, Corder Madera has many different types of residents, including, for example, families with young children, retirees with grown children, and single people. As a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, how would you balance the interests of these different groups?
So the reason why I was so interested in doing representative positions back when I was just in high school as a freshman was because I felt like I really connected with my community of everyone in my community. And I really wanted to give voices. I mean, I do journalism as well. I wanted to give voices to everyone. That's always been my, kind of what makes me excited, what makes me get up in the morning every day. And so I, I really take pride in the fact that I like to pay attention to everyone in my community and make sure that everyone has equitable access and equality to everything that, you know, I enjoy here. And how, how I do that, how I practice that, for one, just in leadership at my school, I work and do events and talk to almost everyone in my student, in the student body. And then at site council, I talk to the staff. And then now that I'm the THSD board rep, I work with trustees and adults. And I also work two jobs. I work at the Pilates Pro Rigs here at Corder Madera. I work with the adults there. I've been a hostess at the Cantina Mo Valley for, since my freshman year. And just working with all kinds of people I see in the staff, speaking really bad Spanglish, but it works. And just working with all kinds of people I see in the staff, speaking really bad Spanglish, but it worked. And just getting to live vicariously through stories that aren't my own, I really just value that. And I plan to, like, I really try to live through that with everything that I do and continue to apply that. Also for leadership, I'm the chair of the cultural committee there. And just making sure that everyone gets equal recognition and support for who they are, what they do. So that applies to all groups here in Corder Madera and making sure everyone has their voices, needs, and practices recognized and bolstered and absolutely applied for the parks. I mean, I worked for the National Park System for the Golden Gate Conservancy. And a big aspect that we worked on was making sure everyone of all groups had equitable access to the parks. It's a really big issue there. And just through that, I really got to see how to really integrate and work with all kinds of groups of people.
Great. Thank you. We're going to ask one yes or no question here, which is just about the time commitment required. The Parks and Rec Commission meets on the fourth Monday of each month, plus occasional special meetings as needed. Meetings begin at 6:30 PM, run approximately two hours on average, and commissioners are required to attend in person. In addition to regular meeting attendance, commission members are expected to read the agenda materials provided, typically posted on the Friday prior to the meeting, and come prepared to discuss agenda items. Committee members may also participate in ad hoc subcommittees that conduct research and/or outreach outside of meeting times. Considering these expectations, do you feel you're able to commit to the term you are applying for on the Parks and Rec Commission?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And with that, we'll invite you to make a one-minute closing statement if you'd like.
Sure, I'll make a one-minute closing statement. I guess all I'd really have to say is that I'm just really excited to be working with you guys and see how we can possibly implement new activities. And one thing I wanted to throw in is for the community garden, the possible community garden there, we have been thinking of doing events there. So for the Cove PTO, PTO, so I do the botany club at my school and it's also affiliated with that potential community garden, we're doing a performance there. So just kind of bringing performances over to East Corder Madera, over to the Cove Park. Because reviewing the master plan, I saw that one of the ones there was to have more like holiday events, more cultural events, more events in general. So I think it's, I mean, we have it here. And like we're at the gazebo just right over here, but I think it'd be so fun to bring more of that fun to East Corder Madera as well. And just, so yeah, that's just something I wanted to throw in and just something I'm excited to expand on more. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right. So with that, that is the end of your interview here. Thanks so much for your time. So we're going to bring the discussion back up to the council here for a quick little deliberation. Who'd like to start us off? Start down here.
I will.
Go for it.
I've been working with Emily for a while. She came presenting the community gardens idea from the Redwood High School students. And I was not very encouraging because we'd gone through it three times. And the last time, the people who did it just kind of disappeared and they moved away. And so you were tenacious. And now you're working with Dana Swisher and Refugia, and you've got the Corder Madera Community Foundation coming behind you. So I would, I would say yes with like five stars.
Excellent. Great.
Thank you.
I'm a yes also.
Excellent.
I'm a yes also.
Great.
Yeah, of course, I'm also on board. But I would just say, Emily, you have a huge amount of energy and large ambitions. And I actually hope you take the time to understand the way the commissions work and the patience and diligence and the smaller kind of apportioned way that we have to achieve these goals. You know, in the interview, in the questions, you were trying to give us everything, right? And you don't always, I think this is going to be a great growth opportunity for you. And so I look forward to seeing how you mature through, through participation. So.
Excellent. And I am a yes as well. Thank you for the work that you've already done and for your willingness to step up and kind of take, take that service to the next level. With that, would anyone like to make a motion?
I would like to make the motion that we have Emily Hitchcock serve for a term, at least one, on the Parks and Rec Commission. Second?
Great.
Probably not really needing that at least one in, you can scratch that.
Okay. Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much. And congratulations, Emily.
Thank you so much for your time, guys. And thank you, Charles. I'll be working on that.
We'll, we'll see you at Oktoberfest, I hope.
Oh.
Awesome. All right. So that's three of our four interviews that we had scheduled. We had an applicant scheduled to interview for the youth spot on BPAC. Have we heard from them?
Correct. We have not heard from Elizabeth and staff followed up with her. I sent her several text messages as well.
Okay.
She was the only applicant for that group. And we feel that for new applicants, it's important to interview before council, which is why all applicants were provided with the questions and emailed information about the meeting, their scheduled time, and also given the option to participate in an interview before council via Zoom. So I think with that information, it would be up to council on the appointment. But it doesn't seem like she's going to be arriving for her interview.
Okay, sounds good. So I think the options that we have here, we can deliberate based off her written application. We can decide that we do not want to entertain an applicant who was not able to come for their interview. And I think maybe a third option, maybe a subset of that, that second option would be, if, I'm thinking if Dylan wanted to have like a full-time spot, a youth spot on an advisory committee, I don't know. Do we have the ability to invite somebody at this stage to apply to a committee? No, not, okay.
We opened up. I think what we could do, though, another alternative would be to just follow up and see if she, for some reason, something happened.
Right.
You know, she wasn't able to actually make it.
Right.
And have another opportunity.
It's a fair question to ask if somebody can't make it to their interview. Will they be able to make it to the, to the commission meetings?
Yeah.
And I, you know, we wouldn't want to saddle BPAC with a, with a member who's not going to be able to attend meetings regularly.
And not, and not let us know that she wasn't coming. I mean, we didn't get a notice. So there's a level of responsibility that I know that bear of the chairman on BPAC really demands. So I don't know that I would appoint her without.
Okay. Can we get feelings from other council members on how to proceed?
Well, my feeling is that we just don't know what happened until we hear from her. And in the lack of that information, I think we just don't move forward and we may have to discuss it once we find out why she wasn't here.
Okay.
Can we just defer this? I mean, the main thing is, okay, my main thing is I don't want another special meeting, just, especially if it's not a challenged interview. Right? Like, it, it, moving forward, just the written description, if she's still interested, right, that we could accept it.
Or can we, can we have it during a regular meeting?
Yes, I think that's a good problem.
An item on the agenda at a regular meeting. And it may be an accelerated version of it.
Yeah. I mean, these were pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable then with just saying, we're going to leave this be for now, not take action. If we're able to connect with the applicant and they're still interested, we can agendize their interview at a future regular meeting. That sound good? Okay. All right. So that'll be our direction on, on that item. So with that, I think we're going to adjourn our special meeting here and we'll be back at 6:30 for our regular meeting.